Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 26th joint meeting with the school board and the Board of Supervisors here in Stafford County to talk about the school budget. So, we have a board member that's virtual, Supervisor Vanuch. So if we could do a roll call and then if the board could vote to accept her being virtual.
Ms. Allen. Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Diggs.
Present.
Mr. English.
Here.
Ms. Gary.
Present.
Ms. Vanuch.
Here.
President.
Okay.
To allow Supervisor Vanuch to be virtual.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please use your voice. Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Chairman Sigmund.
Ms. Hall, could you please take the roll?
Ms. Anne, Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Guy.
Here.
Ms. Hollenfeld.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Sigmund.
Here.
And Dr. Warner.
Present.
Madam Chair.
Wonderful.
Supervisor Monkey.
Okay. First, I think the most important thing we should do right now is have a moment of silence in light of the tragedy in Baltimore. Thank you. Second, I would like to thank you for the beautiful cards that were done by the children. Lovely. They're awesome. And they're all different. So, thank you for those. The board appreciates that.
Thank you. I wanted to, we did leave a little bag. There's some notepaper in there and some stuff you've already seen. But we did want to kind of bring us all back to the table about why we're here. Also, car magnets. I think the last one, some of you asked for these. Now, you all have one to either put on your car to share with a constituent. I needed a new one myself. But it's to focus on the kids. This, and this is a student initiative for student mental health. Our student representatives to the board are working on a mental health initiative and are distributing these green ribbons. So each of you have them. And we encourage everyone in our community, both in the schools and out, to wear them in support of this effort. So, thank you for having us and for being right on top of getting this rescheduled.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, I would just like to say good afternoon to all members present here today. Before we delve into the details of this budget process, let us take a moment to acknowledge the significance of our gathering. With civility and attentiveness, let us steer our discussions toward constructive outcomes regarding the impending budget decisions that will have an impact on the future of our community. Today is another opportunity for each of the boards to ask questions that may guide and aid in their decision-making process. This includes any questions the school board may have provided to the county administrator. As well, I would just like to set some ground rules for our engagement today. Let mutual respect guide our interactions by respecting when someone is speaking, listening to one another's perspective, and understanding that some topics may need to be addressed in a future engagement due to our time constraints today. Again, thank you. We do really appreciate you being here. And we do have a hard stop at 4:55 because we have our budget work session right after this. So, thank you very much.
And we would-
So, I'll turn it over to you.
I also had similar opening remarks, but in the interest of time, I will just say ditto to what Supervisor Bomke had said. And I do, would like to ask on behalf of the schools, if you'll hold your questions to the end, maybe take some notes so we can work through the slides quickly and then we can come back to anything that anybody would want or we can decide to address something later.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Madam Chairs. I'm delighted to share a few things about the school system budget, some happy news, and also some difficult things. As a Stafford County family, it's never easy to talk about really difficult and challenging things. We may even see some images today that are going to challenge our assumptions about how we feel about the schools and our particular situation. I would echo what our chairs have said and please accept these with the notion in which they're intended, which is to find constructive solutions to some of the challenges that we face. We're going to begin like we did last time and we'll close the same way, which is to say thank you. Thank you for coming to the table to hear the school board out. Thank you for your interest in the school board's adopted budget. And thank you for the work that we are going to do today and moving forward. What we hope to cover today is give you a quick update on the state budget, which has some rays of sunshine and some really positive things to share. And we're going to temper that a little bit with some reality as to some of the political landscape that we're likely to face going into the conclusion of the state budget process. We did get an extra question from a supervisor and we'll share the findings of that. And we've also printed a copy of that for you as well. We do want to talk a little bit about some of our economic challenges. I can't help but think that having a little bit better understanding of our economic conditions might help illuminate some of the challenges that we're facing in the school system and help you see how our request in our eyes is very much a reasonable request of the supervisors for full funding. We did want to talk about Drew Middle School because this was something that was of interest at the last couple of meetings. And we want to conclude discussing some of our three R or major maintenance needs and in particular, some of the critical items that have come up. So, let's get to the good news first. The state legislature has absolutely seen the needs as have all Virginians. In the most recent J-Lark study about public education and its funding, Virginia is one of the worst-funded states for public education in the country. We're actually the 39th worst state in the country. That's not great. It's, in fact, that's a really significant disadvantage for us to be in. The legislature took great steps to start addressing some of those challenges. They are likely not going to address the big challenge until a future legislative session, which would address the standards of quality and address the funding formula and go to a weighted student funding formula. So, there's still some significant moves to make, but they've made some really big inroads. The most significant inroad was an adjustment up from the governor's budget. And you may recall that in the board's original proposed budget and original discussions that there was a little bit of a gap, so much as a $6 million adjustment that we recently made before we submitted or resubmitted the budget to the supervisors for consideration. And what we have since learned is that before the General Assembly went sinai dai, they added an additional $3 million to public education that would impact Stafford. We have definitely seen the advantage of being a growing school system in terms of state revenue. But there's a hitch. And the hitch is that there is conflict between the legislature and the governor's office in terms of a couple of critical issues, an arena proposal in Alexandria, tax relief for Virginians. And there is causing some friction and unfortunately, K-12 funding is in the middle of some of that friction. So, even though we see that there might be the potential for additional aid beyond what our adopted budget is, I would temper your enthusiasm and say that we will likely have a little bit of a budget battle for the next couple of months between the governor and the legislature as they try to resolve that. And that doesn't do anybody any good as we experienced last year or we've experienced in years past, as we try to issue contracts for employees and we try to hire teachers and we try to hire staff during this time of year. Not having a pinned-down budget is just as bad as not having enough funds to support it. So, I'll draw you back to what our proposed expenditures look like. And this has not changed, so you should take great relief in that. We still have 16.6 million in new non-discretionary expense because we are growing. This does not cover all of our needs. And our 20.1 million in discretionary expense has been tempered significantly with some of the reductions that we've made before this even came to you, and I'll detail that out. I would point out that this is still $56.4 million short of what our actual projected needs have been, and that was outlined in our five-year plan last year. So, this is not a surprise. We've done great work to try to bring this down to as tight of a number as we possibly can. But the reality is, when you are growing as fast as we are, we still have to accommodate the children. Whether that's in new classrooms and new buses, new ancillary services, we still need to make sure that we are accommodating for additional staff and additional resources to provide for those new students. This, I think, we didn't spend a whole lot of time talking about when we brought the budget to you. And I think it's worth illuminating this to you because I think you get a discretionary number and you're like, well, gosh, how did that come, how did they come up with that? And I heard a comment at the last couple of times that the two boards met, have you ever considered cutting? Well, yes, we cut every year. And these were the cuts that we made before even sending the budget to you. So, in order to bring you a balanced budget that aligned with the county administrator's proposed budget, we had to make several reductions. We increased class size in a number of different areas so that you could have a balanced budget. So, when we made a request of 15 million, it was with $4.2 million of cuts to class size. And so, we didn't spend a great amount of time illuminating that, but I did want to bring special attention to that. The rest of our discretionary funds is compensation. And unfortunately, if we have to make a reduction of any kind at this point, this is where we're going to make a reduction. You have been great partners over the past couple of years in helping us to try to implement a phased-in approach to improve our salary structure. We spent a great deal of time talking about this two years ago, and we appreciate your patience in trying to understand what we were trying to do, which was to take away salary compression and to do that in chapters of big chunks of our salary scale. And we've been effectively able to do that for the last two years. You know, the big question is, are we going to be able to do that in this upcoming year and then the next couple of years to finish out our phased approach? But thank you for your partnership in that because that has been absolutely critical in our retention strategy. It has been effective as we have dropped from 18% turnover to 13% turnover in the past year. And that's a very positive thing. It means that our stuff is working. But we are still very far away from where we need to be, which kind of, yes?
18%.
13%. Okay. Which kind of leads into the question that we received from Supervisor Vanuch. Supervisor Vanuch asked about all, well, it's not really a question, but more like a statement, but asking about all of the school staff over the past five years, what was proposed, what was appropriated, and what was actual. And there's a little bit of a gap in terms of what was proposed and then what was appropriated and actual, but what was appropriated and what was actually expended are identical. We had some rough years. The year, the pandemic year, there was a 4.8% salary increase proposed, but 0% allocated for teachers. The following year was a good year. We absolutely had a 7.2% salary adjustment for teachers proposed and some significant correction to our service scale. And that was what was appropriated and that was what was adopted. It went kind of according to plan. My very first budget with you also kind of followed the same line of thinking and did some pretty significant adjustments to our teacher scale, but not to our service scale and so forth. We did the debacle that we had last year with the mid-year adjustment. No fun at all. Don't want to do that again, that's for sure. Positioning us into our economic landscape, why do salaries matter? And here's why. So, when we look at Stafford and our starting salary, it is $50,000. And I noted that in the upper right-hand corner. And our two closest competitors, our competitor to the south, Spotsylvania County, will be starting with a teacher salary of $53,000 plus some change. But our friends to the north in Prince William County, the starting salary is north of $58,000. This is a little painful because you can drive 15 minutes in either direction from Stafford and do very well financially. It used to be that you, the further north you went, you seemed to be doing better financially. But even here, you can do a little bit better financially going south. So, what does this look like when we zoom in a little bit on Prince William County? This is where the, you are starting to see why people are so frustrated and people are upset about some of the finances here, is because even though the difference is $8,775 for starting teachers in Prince William, if you're an experienced teacher, the difference is $56,000 for just being able to drive a few minutes down the road to do the exact same job. We have got to fix this. And you have to work past 30 years to be a teacher and have more than 10 months on your contract to be a teacher who earns over $90,000 in Stafford. But in Prince William, you make that in your 14th year in Prince William. That's a tough pill for our folks to swallow. It means that they have to work an additional whole half of a career to achieve what folks in Prince William achieve in just half as much time. This is putting us in a significant competitive disadvantage, and it is a hole that we have to climb out of. Another big hole that we've observed, and there are some things that I can add that will definitely create some context here, I don't want to dwell on this, but Stafford used to be one of the highest-performing school divisions in Virginia. In 2011, which was pretty much a tipping point for Stafford County, we were the 15th best in terms of SOL performance, and we were the 79th best in terms of school finance per pupil. That has dwindled down to 68th. And if you're doing the math correctly, half of 132 school districts is 66th. So officially, we are in the bottom half of school district performance in Virginia. But we are in the bottom quartile in terms of pure pupil funding. It didn't happen overnight. It's not going to get solved overnight. Everybody is well aware that it's going to take many years to solve this problem. But we have to start thinking about how we're going to solve this problem because it is impacting performance. Because this is the quality of the people that we can put in the classroom, the quality of the staff that we can keep, the amount of energy that we spend in churn, and of course, the number of people that we have in our school buildings to serve our kids. So, we've all seen this graphic before, but I want to illuminate two really key points. There was an inflection point right after the pandemic where our enrollment dropped during the pandemic. And makes perfect sense, so should our revenue, because aligning to the number of students that we have, our revenue should be aligned. That makes perfect sense. So, having a drop in revenue should have made sense. There, I don't think anyone's fighting that. But then our enrollment, we were one of the handful of school systems in Virginia where our enrollment came back to pre-pandemic levels the year before and actually exceeded the pre-pandemic levels. The one thing that didn't happen is that our revenue didn't snap back. What happened instead is that ESER funds were supplanted in lieu of local funds to cover the loss. Now, ESER funds were designed not to supplant, but to supplement the work that was happening in the school system because a whole host of unintended consequences were likely to occur. Things like chronic absenteeism, drop in performance, student mental health. All of these things were anticipated, and that's what COVID funds were there to help offset, except that they didn't get put towards that, they went towards operations. So, during this same period of time over the last six years, we had two other really significant phenomenon that are worth pointing out. A really steep incline in the number of 504 plans. Now, I want to spend some time, I know that everybody in this room knows what a 504 plan is. And this is for students that have a documented disability that need additional support and need additional resources to help perform their function in school. And it is to provide additional scaffolding to support them. And basically, almost adding 1,000 students to this roster means that this is 1,000 meetings held with 504 committees. It is endless number of additional support meetings that are held to support the children, not to mention the additional instructional time and additional resources that need to be committed to these students, but no financial resources to do that. Similarly, we had a huge spike in our English learner population during this time, going from 2,400 English learners to over 4,200 English learners. Today, we are actually at 4,242 English learners today. These students come to us with a varying level of English proficiency, but the overwhelming majority of these students come to us with no English whatsoever, meaning that they do not have any type of written or oral proficiency in English prior to coming to school. And they don't just come in kindergarten, they come in kindergarten all the way up to the 12th grade. This requires a tremendous investment in order to offset some of the challenges that they have. And it does help explain some of our drop in performance, for sure. Now, I think a few of us have seen this graphic on the internet, but I want to illuminate a couple of things which may explain why a lot of our community is animated about some of these facts and figures and some of these numbers. And we are certainly animated about it too, but I want to kind of point this out. And this is going to be one of those moments where we're going to get really emotional about this because it's a difficult topic, but thank you for keeping it together and helping us see where this is. There's a feeling sometimes on the school side that we are often pointed at or blamed for any increase that happens to tax rates. And when we see the tax rate higher than the percentage of revenue that actually ends up going to the schools, that actually compounds some of the negative feelings that the schools feel about being blamed for something that they're not really the beneficiaries of. To add a little bit more context to that, there is no doubt that over the past 13 years, our budget has increased by 55%, no doubt. But 37% of that, or excuse me, 38% of that was inflation. Another 16% of that was tied to student growth. So, our actual budget growth over the last 13 years was really just 1%. And I can tell you that coming off of the pandemic, 1% budget growth to address some of the mental health needs that we have, some of the student disruptive behaviors that we've had, some of the turnover that we've had, and some of the major maintenance issues that we had, it's just not sufficient. So, I'm not, I'm not going to dwell on this, but I do want to add context to this, and I do want to point this out as being a challenge for us in how we see some of this. And some of this is tied to perspective, and some of this is a lot of our emotion that's wrapped up into this, but please see this from our perspective in terms of how we feel that there is blame that's associated, but yet we are not getting the benefit of the blame that's connected to it, and it's not necessarily lining up in terms of true numbers either. So, the, I'm going to call Chris up to talk a little bit about Drew. This is an exciting and fun thing that we get to talk about because it's a project that everybody in this room is passionate about. And there are some pretty critical decision points that the supervisors indicated to us that they really wanted to be involved in some of the conversation before some of the key decision points. And this is the day. So, we're going to turn it over to Chris to talk about Drew and then talk about some of our major maintenance.
So, echoing what Dr. Taylor said, I want to thank county staff and Board of Supervisors for recognizing the need and kind of listening to school board and staff on kind of the immediate need and the challenges that we face with Drew Middle School. And as Dr. Taylor mentioned, we wanted to start to include you now. We're having those preliminary discussions now that Drew is looking more like a reality, that we can have funding to do a rebuild, replace of Drew Middle School. So, a couple of big decision points that we started discussing at our last work session with our school board. And our school board is kind of very cognizant of costs associated with that and what the impact would be on land search. So, the kind of big decision points that we have are, do we go with our typical 1,100-seat school, which, full disclosure, is what was in our CIP? That's what the budget was set at. Or do we go bigger, and that's looking at where we can achieve long-term savings? So, you're going to have more upfront costs with a bigger school, say a 1,500-seat school. But long-term, you're going to save with some of the overhead cost, replacement cost, or not replacement cost, but some of the maintenance costs as well. Or kind of what fits into the budget now, which would be 1,100-seat school. Part of the other discussion that comes up with 1,100 versus 1,500 is where do we put the school? So, in the, I think our school board has given us the guidance. They want to stay in that Drew Middle School boundary. So, we want those students that have been using the old decrepit Drew Middle School now, we want them, those families to kind of receive that benefit of that new school. So, when you go to a bigger school, we look at probably having to expand that boundary for that zone. That's some pros and cons there. Pros is we can, it gives us a little bit more flexibility of pulling from some of the other schools that are overcrowded, maybe some of the schools in the north. But the cons is it makes it a little bit more difficult with your placement and how you do your school boundary zones. All of this leads into the timing of the schedule, the timeline that's on the screen now. So, for the next few months, we'll continue the dialogue with the school board and the Board of Supervisors on how do we want to proceed in the size of the school and in the identifying land. In the CIP, the original proposal was to swap our Rising Star and Drew Middle School sites so that we could build pretty much together simultaneously and alternate sites. But understanding that there's not funding in the CIP to do Rising Star at the same time, the current Drew site would not be adequate to rebuild the Drew Middle School on the existing site, even up to 1,100-seat school, because the Drew Middle School right now is only about 600, 650 students. So, we want to definitely make that bigger so that we can expand our capacity. The question is, is how big? So, we have about a year of identifying the scope, identifying land, a little bit on the front end of that. And then we start the design work with the ultimate goal of opening the school in August of 2028. So, it's a tight timeline, but it is doable and something that we definitely want to attain. Just a little bit more of the comparison between the 1,100 versus the 1,500 seats. Already kind of detailed these, I'm not going to go line by line. But just pointing out again that, you know, ultimately, the discussion is, is do we want to go bigger and save on our long-term cost, or do we go with what fits in the CIP now and kind of meets the immediate needs of that Drew boundary zone and even a little bit surrounding the Drew area? But recognizing, I'll just point out again, that the board is very cognizant and aware that in our current CIP proposal and what staff have worked into the CIP is a budget that only reflects the 1,100-seat school. So, our board doesn't want to jeopardize that and set that back. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason to go in a little bit more detail about some of our three R projects.
Pretty jazzed up to talk about maintenance and three R. See that? Hold the applause, please. This is fun. So, let's talk about maintenance. Three R here for a few minutes. Just want to draw out a couple of things from this slide. This is the FY '24 unfunded three R needs. So, if you were to go back to our, well, it's in our current year right now, these are all of the unfunded three R issues that we're currently looking at. I do want to point out here and just call out, there's about $10.8 million here of unfunded items. And the vast majority of these are not bells and whistles. Most of these are mechanical life, safety, paving, building envelope types of issues. So, when we don't do these things, they do end up having, they do end up eventually coming home and causing major issues in our facilities. So, what typically ends up happening when we don't fund these over the years is that the costs continue to escalate as we roll, you know, $10 to $12 million of unfunded liabilities every single year. We've also put together another list. This is some of the additional urgent and emergent needs that have just come up even within the past year. Some of these are on the three R list in the next year or two. Some of them have been historically, many of them have been historically on the three R list as well. These are essentially, what you're mostly seeing here are a lot of athletic facility issues that are really starting to show their age. One of the things that we had talked with, just briefly go back to this list right here for one moment, the North Stafford High School envelope project up there, you see it, fourth line down, $1.2 million. That was actually $1.2 million in funding to add to $1 million of funding we currently or previously had had allocated for this project. Without that $1.2, we're unable to do that project. And so- Without that 1.2, we're unable to do that project, and so unfortunately, it does need to be done, but what we've suggested to our board is that perhaps we could use a portion of those funds to begin trying to tackle a few of the other emergent and urgent needs. However, upon further reflection, we don't actually believe we're going to be able to do that, and we're going to talk a little bit more about this in April. But from this list right here, we were hoping to tackle about $1 million worth of it. What is going to end up happening, we'll probably spend most of that at Stafford Middle School, HVAC issues that we're encountering out there. Again, a project that's rolled many years, and we'll probably go ahead and just fund, we need to buy furniture next year for the kids because we don't have enough furniture for all the kids coming in. So just kind of a real live issue that we're dealing with right now, where the funding is inadequate, and then the projects continue to roll, and as they roll, this is what deferred maintenance begins to look like. What doesn't get done, obviously, we can't maintain but a certain level. These are some just pictures that we've selected, there's many more we could show at some of our facilities right now. Stafford Middle School, the one here closest to me, is the one, one of the pieces of that that we're trying to tackle this summer, again, that $1 million. We need about $12 million to get all of Stafford up to speed, so that will, Brookpoint and Stafford will take up all of the 3R funding for the next couple of years. So what ends up happening then, not only do those projects get deferred, those HVAC projects that we can't get to, but the athletic facilities are just so far down the list we can't even possibly get to them. You've probably seen or heard recently, we have a number of facilities that are closed and/or closing. Every facility on this picture, listed on this picture is currently or has recently been closed. The Dixon Smith, Rodney Thompson, and Gale Middle School tennis courts have been closed for a couple of years. Just, they're unplayable. And just recently, within the past two weeks, we've been forced to close the Mountain View High School track, the Dixon Smith track, the North Stafford High School tennis courts, and unfortunately, the Brookpoint High School bleachers are at end of life. We cannot get them to reliably open or close, and so unfortunately, the gymnasium will be open for just practice and gym, PE, those types of things, but we're not going to be able to host any types of events in those facilities, any types of competitive events. So we've already rescheduled many of the track meets and so forth. We're still working to figure out what to do at Brookpoint, but wanted you all to be aware of that because it's starting to come up on our end, and we're starting to hear from parents who are very disappointed about the situation. Another issue that we're really seeing a lot at our facilities is the pavement. Again, we're trying to focus, the little bit of 3R funding that we get every year gets absorbed into the HVAC projects. Those are our critical system type of projects that end up getting, absorbing the vast majority of that funding. And again, the result of that is that the paving projects, the sports projects, the roof projects, the exterior envelopes on the buildings, they can't be addressed. So we should be spending about $2.5, $2 to $3 million a year just across our facilities going through paving, repaving, and if we're doing proper care on our facilities, we should be able to get about 20 to 30 years out of a typical parking lot, and that's with good care. Unfortunately, we're only funded at about $250,000 a year in our paving, and that's enough to do some basic patching. Obviously not enough, but we are able to do a little bit of patching here and there. We really need to be funding about one parking lot every, one to two parking lots every year replacement. Right now, we're doing one about every five years. Candidly, that's pushing it, it's probably closer to seven or eight years in reality, but we're vastly underfunding these. That North Stafford lot there on the far left, that's the, that's the lot that the marching band practices in as well as driver's ed. We have not determined yet if that's going to be usable this summer and next fall for those activities. Just so you're aware that that may also be impacted here in the very near future. So those are some of the things that people see every day when they walk around our facilities, but that's, as Dr. Taylor says, just kind of the tip of the iceberg. I wanted to explain something that happened at Rodney Thompson Middle School last week, and this is actually scary, to be honest with you. So this is an HVAC issue. Rodney Thompson Middle School, like many of ours, uses hot water system of, called boilers, right, that heat up the water and then goes through pressurized tanks and eventually out to the system and cools and heats the building. The bladder in one of the hot water expansion tanks catastrophically failed at about 12:00 midnight, we're not exactly sure what time, and what that led to, normally the pressure in the system should be between 30 to 35 PSI. The system pressure went up to about 100 PSI, burst a pipe over top of the cafeteria, and 165-degree water came down into the cafeteria. When our crews arrived in the morning, because they got reports of water pouring in and steam flying into the building, it was, they said it was like a sauna walking into the room, right? It was very hot, stripped the wax right off the floors. Thankfully, obviously, no students were present, we were very fortunate. And these are the types of things that are very concerning to staff. Just the week before, we replaced a similar pipe that we happened to find at Drew Middle School. We spent about $30,000 in an emergency replacement there that we found in the boiler room when we started to peel away some of the insulation from the pipe, but we can't catch everything. This tank should have been replaced probably in sometime between 2015 and 2020. These tanks have about a 15- to 20-year lifespan on them, and this one was pushing 25. So when we're talking about our critical systems and the potential failures out there, this is the real concerns that we have. I did want to point out one other quick thing, sorry, Dr. Taylor, just one more second here. We did want to give you our 3R list for FY25, and we went through to try and highlight by magisterial district, the 3R list, so that each of you can see in your individual areas, if you will, what it is that we're specifically trying to do in the schools near you. The yellow highlights on this list, those are what projects, those are the projects that we'll be able to accomplish in the 3R list if we don't fund the critical systems projects, okay? Because what happens then, if we don't fund that critical systems list that's in our major capital list now, all those dollars that, those 3R dollars that would otherwise go to roofs and security systems, intercoms, those funds get sucked into the HVAC projects. And when you go through this list, it's pretty much we're replacing freezers and refrigerators with nutrition money. So it is pretty dramatic. I do, I do just want you all to be aware that the 3R list that we submitted across the street back in October assumes that the critical systems is funded. If it's not, then that 3R, what we're going to be able to do on that 3R list will dramatically decrease, and our concern is that we'll run into more situations like this.
So left the two last unpleasant things to share for me, and I will say that as a parent, if this doesn't shake you a little, it should, because if students were at Rodney Thompson when this happened, this would be a very different conversation that we would be having today. And I will also say that with this 3R list that gets shared every October, nobody in this room can say that we didn't know about this. And these are very hard realities that we need to face. We recognize we have a challenge, but we do need to find a solution out of this issue, and the only way to do that is by working together. One of the things that doesn't help working together, and this is the other unpleasant thing I get to share, is that sometimes we see things that are pretty misleading. And here is your apples-to-oranges comparison, comparing an adopted budget to a proposed budget, because I kind of tell you, every adopted budget is significantly less than proposed budgets versus comparing proposed to proposed, because if you compared proposed to proposed, you'd be looking at a $217 million comparison to a $229 million comparison. And the cost does go up year over year. When we continue to defer maintenance, it amplifies the cost. It doesn't get lower, it doesn't stay the same, it goes up. This is the hard reality of what we are doing and where we are. It becomes more expensive with time every year that we kick the can down the road. And I will be the first to say that deferring maintenance is a great budgetary strategy for one year, if you go back and fix it the following year. But if you defer year over year over year, it's problematic. And so I will say that when we are funded at less than half the ability to fix some of these problems, it's a hard question to answer when our parents and our constituents come to us and say, "Why won't you fix this?" Well, I'm going to be completely candid, we cannot. We check a bank account before we cut a check. This is not hyperbole, these are very real situations. This is decades of neglect that is catching up to us, and we have to solve these problems by working together. So we would like to invite staff from the county, and we would like to invite the supervisors to audit all of these components in our 3R list that we've shared every year for the past several decades, to validate that what we are saying is actually true, and come see for yourself. I think that you will find that when you enter into our buildings, they look beautiful, but behind the walls and on the roofs, they experience a lot of challenges. I will say that every time I go into a place like Rodney Thompson or Mountain View High School or Colonial Forge, it's hard for me to believe that those schools are all over 20 years old, but behind the walls, they certainly show the difference. And I don't think we're at the place right now where we can ignore this problem any longer. It's not going to make them go away. Stafford County is not shrinking or stopping in its growth. Prince William doesn't have any plans to cut salaries anytime soon, and major maintenance certainly doesn't fix itself. This is really a plea. At this point, we do need your help, and I will say that this is also kind of one of those pivotal points in time, that partnership can be formed today, and we can work together today. We get that this is not going to be solved overnight, we get that this is not going to be solved today, we get that this is not going to be solved in this budget season, but there's got to be a plan. There has got to be a path forward, there has got to be a strategy, and we would like to be your partners in that strategy. I know that there's probably a lot of questions, we'll do our very best to answer them in the 11 minutes that we have left, but we thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Board members, do you have questions? If you could raise your hand, please.
Yep, I do.
Supervisor English?
In reference to your 3R program, I understand that, but when you give these figures, where are these figures coming from? Are they coming from your staff, are they coming from, the staff just goes in, looks at, they go in and look at a HVAC system and say, "Okay, it's going to cost this much to fix it." Where does this figures, because what I'm asking, I would like to see an independent audit done on all the schools to see where we are as far as fixing stuff, because I, not that I don't trust you, but I want to know what our, if we go into Stafford Elementary School and they say, "This, this, this needs to be fixed, this is what it's going to cost", and then if it doesn't, we don't get it fixed here, it's going to keep going up and up, what about an independent audit on that?
We would absolutely love that, but I will say that if you know about it, you then have to fix it. So there is that part of it too, but Jason will tell you how our fixes need to be costing.
Yeah, so I guess just in terms of the independent, we do have independent third-party that does an analysis of the facilities. We just recently conducted the second half of those last year, so we've got recent updated facility assessments. They're on our website, you can find them. Very transparent there in terms of you can see everything that's at all the facilities, the costs associated with them, the needs. We've gone back through, and we tried to capture this on your 3R list, tried to capture the years that they were originally, oh, I'm sorry, it didn't show up anymore. If we can send you the years that they were originally proposed in terms of the 3R issues and so forth that we found too.
So when was the last time the audit was done? You said, when was the last time the audit was done?
We just finished up one about a year ago.
A year ago?
So keep in mind too, our system is so big, you can't do every school every year in an audit, so it has to be done in chapters. We just did, how many schools in the last one?
We did about 15 or 16, about half of them, and we just did the previous half just a couple of years before that.
So I guess my question is, why wouldn't you do, why wouldn't, is to get to where we need to do, why wouldn't we just do all the schools at one time as an audit to let us know where we're at?
We did all of them over two years. It's pretty good.
So you can't do, can't do in a year. And the other, I guess the other question, what about shared, we do shared maintenance and shared janitorial stuff between us and the county? Is that an option that there's out there for that?
I think we're certainly open to it, but we would also have to have the assurance that it would actually get done on the timeline to keep schools operational. I will say that when we have an issue, we're there in the middle of the night to fix it, because that's what needs to be done to open school the next morning, because when we don't have a building that's online, we close, and we are limited by the number of days that we can close. And I don't think that that's going to save you money. It's certainly not the hundreds of millions of dollars that need to be pumped into the schools over the last two decades of not paying for them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. English. Do you have another one?
One more question. I asked for the, I did ask for the $100,000 for everybody who's over $100,000. And I don't care who's making it, it doesn't make any difference to me, but you said you got 240-some, I think they're making over $100,000, that's just roughly $24 million, $24 million, I think. Why, and it was, why can't this year, these people that are making over this $100,000 forego a raise this year and give it to the support staff that need it to make ends meet?
You're teachers, Mr. English. You're asking teachers.
I said anybody, I'm asking.
We have teachers on that list.
Again, where I was asking is, I know you're going to say it's going to mess the scale up, but I'm saying for this year, anybody, anybody that's making over $100,000, if you get somebody that's making 150, whatever, and you get a 5% raise, that's a lot of money to go on. So I'm just asking, we had to do it to the sheriff's office, because anybody from the first sergeant above had to forego a raise to take care of the people that are not making, and I'm looking out for the support staff, because I think if your support staff walked out tomorrow, the school would probably close because you need them.
We need every employee that we have, and I would humbly ask that you workshop that with your constituents about asking their principals to forego a salary increase, given how hard that they work to keep the schools open too.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Okay. Supervisor Gary, and then Supervisor Young.
Supervisor, I have a good question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Supervisor Gary?
So I was going to ask a question regarding the burst with the water, 165 degrees, and what that would do if, God forbid, the children had been in the school at the time, but I looked it up. Not to be graphic, but this is what I found, that human skin is destroyed at 150 degrees. If we sat in this room right now and were told that there was a potential for a water break that would spill that water to that temperature on us, we would not be sitting in this room. And we're allowing our children to attend schools, forcing them, because what else are we going to do to attend these schools that we won't fund to fix things like that? So that is incredibly upsetting to me. Thank God no one was in there. Thank God, no service workers, no teachers, no children. That's frightening to me, and I think that that really paints the correct picture of what we're dealing with here and how far the neglect has been, because these are safe, serious safety issues. We need to find money. We need, we need to make this happen, we need to find the money for it. I support funding the 3R as proposed, we need to do this, that's just my opinion, I wanted to share that, but that was frightening to look that up and see that. I can't, I can't sleep at night not taking care of our children like that.
Okay, any other questions from board members? I have a question regarding, I see the tennis facilities on here. Is that, because I know that the courts are in really bad shape. Is that still a program that is in the PE arena for middle school kids? Because I thought that that had left the PE system a couple of years ago.
It's part of the Virginia Standards of Learning for Physical Education in actually middle school and high school. Granted, physical education as a standard of learning course ends in 10th grade, so it's just ninth and 10th grade, but we do have varsity and JV sports that do compete at the high school level. At the middle school level, it's a unit as part of health and PE in both 6th, 7th, and 8th grades.
Okay, all right.
But they've supplanted by going and doing it at the gym instead. So they don't really have a net or a court or anything.
Okay, and then... And then looking at the ESER funds, which I think are about 3.1 million or so.
There's more than that, but.
Well, the ones that were supplanted, I think.
So.
That was the number that I saw in one of the sheets.
You had, you had ESER funds that were used to pay for salaries when really that's, you, you never really want to use one-time money for an ongoing expense, but to, to balance the books, the school division had to make sure that they were providing adequate support to kids for things like, you can't not have a school psychologist, there, there is a function that is performed that school psychologists have to do. You can't not have a, a, a school social worker for some functions that need to be performed. So the school division made some really difficult decisions to employ some of these folks, and, and one of the bigger expenses was paraprofessionals. It's, it's probably not something in hindsight that we would go back and redo, but, but it was certainly something that, that helped to augment instruction. One problem, there's this big ongoing expense. So what, what has the school division done? We've cut about 100 paraprofessionals. That hasn't made the problem go away, there's still a significant learning loss, but the workforce that was addressing that learning loss has gone away.
Okay. Then I, I think I'm referring to the slide that was labeled grant funding. It was in the slides that came over to us.
So that is not necessarily ESER.
And it, it was labeled ESER funds, and it was 3.1 million.
You want to opine on that? Because I'm, I'm not sure what.
We, we had an adjustment to this year's budget for funds shifting over from the ESER fund, which was about $3.1 million.
Okay.
So that's on your, on your summary here?
Oh, yes.
Correct.
So ongoing expense that was previously financed by ESER.
Right, which is now being rolled in.
Yes.
So that was all part of COVID, and it's now rolling into the operating fund.
Yes, because the, the COVID problem didn't go away, but the money did.
Correct, correct. All right. Were there other grants like ESER that are in the operating budget now, or were those the biggies?
That's, that's the most significant.
Yeah, ESER is definitely the biggest one in, in COVID relief money. In this budget, we have one title position that's shifting over that's been there, and it's kind of a phased out approach.
Okay.
But that's a small, small part of that 3.1 million.
Okay.
Not operating, yeah.
And then my other question was about, and looking at the school allocations, which that isn't a big part of the budget. Help me understand, when I look at some of the schools, and, you know, they have 15, 20, I, I understand that you've got the additional 50,000 for the new programs that are coming along at those schools, but other schools had increases of 15, 20%. Help me understand what the needs are in those schools.
It's tied to enrollment, and it's differentiated based on a couple of risk populations. So as the school's enrollment goes up, and in some cases, we've had schools that have jumped 10, 15%, so will their, their per pupil allotment, because we do it per student. So their allocation is per student. We also have a, a small at-risk add-on that's tied to whether or not there's an English language learner in the school. That person also gets a small allotment to offset some of the expense there, talking like $25, not hundreds of dollars. Students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students as well. So there's some, some differentiation, but it's to account for differences in student population, it's a best practice. I've been doing it for years.
Okay. So somebody like Rocky Run that has a 16% increase, is that due to the relocatables or their enrollment in that school?
Some due to, I think it's relocatables, but we also have, also it's a growing student population.
Okay.
It's predominantly going to be because of student growth at Rocky Run, and then also at each of our schools that had modular classrooms, either that we added this year that we're projecting to add next year, literally like $500 per classroom to help them, whether it's with even water coolers in there, or maybe it's hourly pay to help people walk students back and forth in the middle of the day if it can't be done during like a staff shift during the day.
All right. My last question is for Mr. Towery. When you were talking about the boiler, you made a statement, and I want to just drill down into this a little bit, that we can't be aware of everything. So that gives me a little pause, because obviously you guys were aware of Rodney Thompson. We and, and the school division made a decision not to fund that, right? Help me understand what other schools are in a situation like that, so that we could prevent, and I'm not talking about the tennis courts and the tracks and all those things, I'm talking about health and safety issues in our schools that we could know about right now, today, that may need to be addressed as soon as possible.
Yeah. And there's probably a deeper level of analysis that we could do there to, 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 to give you a better picture, but it's, um.
And you might have to come back to us with additional information, but I don't want to leave the room thinking that.
Mr. Towery.
When you said, I'm not, I, I can't be aware of everything.
Yeah.
I think, I think what he meant, because Mr. Towery and I have talked about this a lot, before Rodney Thompson and after Rodney Thompson, which is, so many of our things have gone past useful life.
Sure.
We don't know which one's going to break tomorrow, which one's going to break yesterday. We know yesterday, obviously, Rodney Thompson.
And we have the same thing in the county, absolutely.
Right. But, but, I mean, almost every school has some sort of project that's been delayed, maybe not Moncur or Stafford High rebuild, but all of our schools that have, have begun aging, and, and I've made this statement before, which is, when Stafford had significant growth and we were adding schools every year, or two schools a year, that was late 90s and early 2000s. And that's about 25 years ago now. And what's the most, like, what's the typical useful life for major mechanical equipment?
25 years.
25 years. So that list has been kind of like building and building, and now we're at the point where it's rapidly, more and more items are coming onto that list. We've had them on the list, but now it's more items that are becoming unfunded. So Mr. Towery specifically saying, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow and what pipe's going to burst tomorrow, but we have our list on our three R that details, these are all the projects we think we need to do, but we can only prioritize so much. So, you know, what do you do with 5 million when you need 20 million? And that's kind of been steamrolling each year.
I guess so, could I ask on behalf of our board for, you know, a, a highlight of those items that are kind of health and safety related?
So you've got a short list, actually, that's in your slide deck.
Right, right.
And I would, I would generally say that anytime you've got years multiple of deferred, you're on borrowed time. And, and so this is just what was programmed in for this current fiscal year, and it's multi-year deferrals that have kind of stacked up. And, and a good question to ask might be, well, how does something get deferred? Well, something that is life safety breaks ahead of something that is scheduled to be replaced. And so you fix the thing that is broken first, and the thing that is ending, nearing its useful life gets put right back in the queue. And so what we are dealing with right now is that everything is in the queue. Everything's been in the queue. And how long it's been in the queue and its current status is really just kind of the question. So you go through our three R list, and yes, there's a handful of things that get added, or our major maintenance list that get added, that may be new things ending their useful life, but the vast majority of it are things that were programmed during the late 90s, early 2000s, and here we are. We're at that magical time. So I know we're at time, ma'am, so thank you so much.
Yep, we are. I need to see what other board members, anybody else have a question that has not spoken already?
No.
Okay. All right, Daryl?
I guess this question last time, and I asked- I asked this question before, and I said about the, engineers were taken out of the schools, right?
No.
That's, well, that's not what I've been told. The engineers have been taken out of the schools. Has it, have the, has the engineers been taken out of schools? Because I've been told they have been, engineers.
So all, our middle schools and high schools still have plant engineers in them.
That has not changed.
So, yes. We, we took one from each and made centralized teams that go out to the schools and do the major maintenance work. So same number of people allocated, if not, we have better allocated resources to the schools now. But, but having the person in the school versus centrally doesn't solve our problem of replacing.
I understand that, but you, but you, when you taking those out, then you, and I looked at this and looked it up, y'all bought 300 and some thousand dollars of the vehicles last year for these engineers. I know they did, I've already checked the numbers. So my problem, my, my, I guess my question is, I have no problems helping the schools, but if we're, if we're doing stuff like that, and we could take $325,000 and put it onto a project to fix, I'd rather see that done than buy a vehicle.
The vehicles are so they could go to the schools.
Those are the work vehicles to go out to the schools and do the work.
Because we have 17 elementary campuses.
These are 300, these are new vehicles.
Okay, okay.
If you're anyone, because there's too many people squating, what do you, finish this question and then whoever you're addressing.
I'm done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. English, to answer your question, here is the trade-off. No service whatsoever for our elementary schools, and all of our secondary schools having two personnel, or all of our secondary schools having one personnel, and now there's service at the elementary schools. That's the trade-off.
Okay.
I will, I will just add, we've actually seen a, a very significant improvement from what we've done. We've actually found a lot more things, if you will, behind the walls that were, I, I think just, candidly, folks got used to it. So by doing that and bringing them into the central maintenance team, and then having teams go out to these facilities, we've, we've actually found a lot more of these issues. So, and it's, it's proved to be so far very efficient and very effective. I think that this has definitely been a bonus to the schools, but.
Okay. That's great. Okay. We do have our, we're already over our time. Dr. Young?
Yeah, thank you. Chairwoman Vomke. I, I just want to say thank you all for coming today. You know, all of us here are big supporters of the school system. I for one have been on the school board and know what it is to ask for funding, to know that there's always a great need. Coming to the board of supervisors, you, you have a different lens and see not only the schools, but you also see the county as a whole and the needs of everyone. And we're not losing sight of that. You made a good point and said that we need to work together, and that's what we intend to do. What we fall short on is when was asked to fund 15 million, that we went out with a tax rate, not from 94, that our county administrator mentioned and, and put in place, but we started with 91, which took us down 7.8 million already. So I just want to make sure that our audience and our constituents know that we cannot at this point do that unless we re-advertise at 94. So we are at 91. That's where we're going to start. I just also know that I wanted to ask a question specific about COVID funds, because it's something that we looked at on our side, and we've mentioned it on several occasions, that because we use COVID funds that were available for two years, we already had to raise one penny towards some funding. And my question to you, I know that there were two years while I was on the board that we did use COVID funds and funded. I've looked through all my paperwork. I wanted to know what funding of COVID are you now missing that you really need because they're required positions?
Yeah. That, that's a great question. And I will say that we've tried to distill this down to a couple of things. The state incentive money to help with high doses of tritamine actually is going to help a ton. And that will definitely help on the academic front. I think some of the real critical issues that we're really lacking and still need a lot of financial support are some of the social structure pieces that need to be put in place to support student mental health, and, and also to support some of the also wraparound services that we provide. So this is going to be pretty much your school counselors, your school psychologists, and your school social workers are going to be that, that really critical mix. And this, the legislature is trying to address this in part, but it's going to be a while before they, before they really fully fund that.
And just a follow-up on that, I, I know a lot of parents, you know, need care for their kids, and, and they seek places that are going to support their children, you know, the five for four, the IEPs, and English learners. And I, I for one, I mentioned it the last time about programs, we, we cannot continue the same way. And I'm not sure if you already started looking at different ways of handling, we had 100% of English, you know, learners that don't speak English. I mean, I run into them all the time, and I'm like, how do you get through school? So are we planning on changing the way how we teach them? Because that's what's also pulling down, you know, the numbers.
You know, we talk about all the stuff that we, we fight about, but this is actually one of the things that we can say that we win at. Two years ago, the board made a shift in how they staff for English as a second language classrooms to a tiered approach, where the level one, level two classes, these are the kids that have no English level proficiency or staff differently than kids that are in a level four, level three classroom that have a little bit more language proficiency. That was a pretty significant change, because the state was like, 54 to one, good luck.
Yeah.
You know, of course, that doesn't work. So we made that modification and built that into our staffing standards.
Yeah.
Doggone it, the legislature just adopted that as the new standard.
Perfect. And putting them all in one school, did that help?
Yeah, so that was hu- huge financial savings for us, because we were already doing it, and it's actually something that we were able to leverage.
Yeah.
And we translated that into, into, into more for comp as a result.
Perfect.
Huge win. Huge win.
Okay. Thank you. Monica says she has, Supervisor Gary says she has something for 10 seconds, so we're already over, so I'm timing you.
Put a timer, thank you so much, I'll be quick. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. So first of all, thank you for those comments, Dr. Young. If you want to motion for a higher tax rate to re-advertise, I'll gladly support that. I think we need to explore more what's going on.
Okay, that's your 10 seconds. All right, can I have five more? The comment I wanted to make, most importantly, was that the health-related, the health-related
comment.
Yep.
And our sports facilities. We have a serious mental health crisis, and we're wearing these for a reason. And if we're not willing to invest in the things that support their mental health, we should just take these ribbons off because they don't mean anything.
We, we understand that.
The Virginia Department of Health, one more sentence, thank you. The Virginia Department of Health pointed out two different things that were most important for mental health, housing and recreation.